It's 10 o'clock. The city council workshop is now in order. I've been asked to read at the beginning of this meeting. "The upward trend of local COVID-19 numbers coming from Peterson Regional Medical Center played a major factor in influencing the decision to return to social distancing measures at city council meetings." This decision was made late last week after the hospital reported a high number of COVID-related hospitalizations and the growing numbers of new COVID cases over the weekend only affirm that this move is the best, is in the best health interests of the public, the city council, and staff. Because of this trend, we are committed to doing all that we can to keep our citizens safe while they are at City Hall and helping the hospital flatten the curve on the recent COVID surge. Standard safety protocols will be observed by city council, city staff, and citizen visitors attending city council meetings. And while wearing of masks at council meetings is voluntary, we highly encourage it as a preventative health measure. We will observe six-foot distance seating with visitor seating being designated. Visitor overflow will be in the City Hall lobby or outside City Hall. Doesn't look like an issue today. Citizens are encouraged to view and hear city council meetings on Spectrum Channel 2 or by live streaming via the city's website, www.curvilletx.gov. Council meetings are also recorded, and the recordings posted on the city's website and Facebook pages. Let's see. Do we have any speakers for the workshop today? Do we have a Zoom option at all today?
I don't believe we have a Zoom option for today.
All right, and we don't have anybody in the audience. So, item 2A for information and discussion.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Drew.
Here to discuss and kind of introduce the subdivision code. As you all know, this has gone through Code Review Committee. They worked on it, of course, with 2020, kind of had a break in there, but collectively, they worked on it for about a year and a half, actually, over the course of several meetings. Of course, we started with consultant to get our main draft. Code Review Committee and staff refined that draft. Here's some of the dates that we went through recently for Planning and Zoning Commission did a workshop and approved it. And here on City Council Workshop, really just to introduce the work that's come down and introduce the draft. Mr. Hayes had a memo on your backup. There's still a few little items that were buttoning up on the legal review, a few definitions that we're still tweaking to add in there. Obviously, nothing substantial changes coming there. So, what the draft you have is pretty well buttoned up.
Go back, would you go back one more? Okay.
And we're shooting for September 14th for the public hearing and first reading.
Okay.
And then second reading at the end of September.
Thank you.
So, going through several of the Curville 2050 action items from the Economic Development section to ensure that development services, processes, and existing codes and ordinances are not impediments to development. From the Housing Chapter, very similar statement. Community, mobility, facilities, and parks, all kind of reiterate that same thing, revise our codes, make sure we're keeping things up to date. Additionally, 2019 legislature adopted some changes to the subdivision code statewide in what city's authority and how we review. Basically established a strict timeframe for those subdivision plat reviews. I guess, let me back up a little bit. I know you all usually fairly familiar, but for the public at least, this code is specifically to subdivisions and plating, which is dividing land, getting your legal descriptions. It's kind of the development process on paper before the physical development of a property occurs. So, 99% of your public will never deal with this other than, you know, real estate transactions. They're going to either be plotted or not plotted, have that legal description or not. That's where this all stems from and kind of brings the development projects in with the civil infrastructure and engineering, brings all those pieces together. So, our existing subdivision ordinance does have some gaps. Certainly doesn't have any response to the 2019 legislative changes. And there are some procedures that we are authorized to use under state law that are not even really drafted in the current ordinance. So, just looking to review and make those updates. So, the outline of the ordinance itself, first section is, of course, general provisions. What's the purpose of the code and plating? Article 2 gets into the process and the process and those general provisions that follow the process. Article 3 goes a little more detail to the actual procedures. And then Article 4 is subdivision improvements and design standards. That's kind of the real meat of the ordinance.
And with what, can you go back to what you just said about this legislature and they had made amendments? Are we going to make those to our?
They're in this draft, yes.
In this draft, okay.
Yes, sorry, the current adopted ordinance does not have any response to that.
Okay.
This draft was started primarily because of that, those changes.
All right, I got confused whether you're talking about the existing draft or existing code.
Yes, sorry, existing code does not have any of that language. The current draft does incorporate all of that.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things the Code Review Committee had asked our consultants was to look at some kind of flow chart to really get a better standing of how this comes into play with the subdivision development process. So, starting with a pre-application conference, our staff meets with the developer or the engineer or the surveyor, their team. We've kind of developed this to have two different tracks, two different versions. So, track one would be the standard procedure. Track two would be an alternative procedure. Track two is really more akin to what we do today. Several of these, or a couple of these steps kind of get combined and worked in parallel. That was when we didn't have such a strict timeline and there was a lot more back and forth between staff and the applicant to get all the details buttoned up.
So, for the history, Drew, and having served on the committee, there's a shot clock now that is a mandate from the legislature. And if the city doesn't meet its deadlines, then the plat is considered to be approved. So, there's some different methods of doing this. And so, maybe you'll go into it, right, about the alternate, how you have to waive that process, is that correct, if you go the alternate route?
It doesn't waive the timeframe, but it allows the applicant to actually combine those different steps.
The steps, okay.
The standard procedure is based on that 30-day shot clock. So, from the day, an application is brought into our office and accepted. Staff has 30 days to review it. Most plats are not approved by staff, they're approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, which meet monthly. So, you can see the conflict there. And we'll go into detail on the scheduling as well. So, to help mitigate that 30-day strict timeline, which kind of eliminates that back and forth with the applicant quite a bit, we've actually broken down the standard procedure into four stages.
Okay.
That first one being an adequate facilities plan, which is more or less a general concept of the utility layout. And then the preliminary plat, which is standard procedure, just the actual subdivision layout, still not fully engineered, but at least, you know, kind of working the streets, the lots, consistent with that utility concept plan of the adequate facilities plan. Then they go into construction plans, which are the civil engineering, actual working documents, the design documents. Prior to 2019, those were not required to fall under any shot clock. Now, our engineers are required to review those in 30 days. And so, some of the projects, if you think of, you know, Lennar's, good example, that's not a giant project, a small project. When we looked at Vintage Heights, that review was not possible in 30 days had they built out the whole thing. Looking at smaller phases, it's doable, but some of these bigger developments take more than 30 days just to get through those design reviews. And then, of course, final plat goes P and Z for approval. A little more detail on that same concept there. Coming from the pre-application conference, the next, the applicant can choose track one or track two, the standard procedure or the alternative procedure. Then we go through and look to make sure all outside operations have been, that are required have been presented, excuse me. One example would be like a Tech dot, if your development is dependent upon approval from Tech dot, we want to make sure that you have already gained approvals from Tech dot before we start our 30-day clock, assuming that you have approval from Tech dot.
Remind me, because I'm sorry, it's been a while. So, on the pre-application conference does not start the shot clock?
That's correct.
It doesn't stop, it's just kind of, everybody's getting together and gathering, these are the things we need and this is the window we have.
So, typically, the applicant will bring kind of a concept plan with them so that staff can take a look at it, review it. That's kind of where we know, all right, we do need to engage Tech dot on this project or not, we need to engage other outside entities, whatever those may be. Kind of give them a checklist of what they'll need for their formal application. So, then they bring that formal application in later.
And that formal application's when the clock starts?
That's correct. So, some of those other ones, you can see on, I think you guys can see on your screen there, zoning approval, Tech dot permits, any facility studies that need to be done. So, that's your capacity studies on water and sewer. Major waiver request, we'll get into that a little bit, any waiver to the subdivision. Or if it's a major waiver, we come to council first so that it's not, again, not stuck on that 30-day timeline, getting it before council. Then we get to the official submittal, go through completeness check. Once that completed application is filed, clock starts there. And then we've got 30 days to get it reviewed into the planning commission. So, as you can see, there's quite a few different steps that fall into that, whether it's approved, approved with conditions, or denied. And then any of those conditional approvals or denials, sections of the code must be cited for what those deficiencies were. General provisions, again, just kind of primarily established from the previous ordinance, talks about our authority and exclusions of the code and the definitions within the code. One of the changes we did make from the previous, the current adopted ordinance, is that a lease does not require a separate plotted lot. Hasn't been consistently followed in Curville, but as our local ordinance required a lease, like a multi-tenant building, each leased space should have been plotted as a separate lot. From the development standpoint, that doesn't serve the city any benefit. From the landlord's standpoint, it's really up to them if they choose to or not. So, we've taken that out of the code since it has not been consistently used. And I don't, personally, I don't see the benefit from the city's standpoint. We're looking at the overall development, not down to the leased spaces. So, removed another exemption for the conveyance of land between adjacent property owners. It's been one of our most debated sections of the current code, trying to figure out exactly what applies and what doesn't. Staff kind of brainstormed for a while to see if we could come up with a scenario that actually made sense, that did not require plating, and we couldn't come up with anything.
So, in other words, if you're replanning and you're changing the physical, the physical, the size of the land, you're going to have to do a conveyance before you, yeah.
So, the couple of examples that we talked through, Ms. Clarkson and Ms. Eichner, if you both own lots next to each other, we're selling five foot of your lot to the neighbor, this would actually allow you to be exempt from plating. And then, now the plat doesn't match the deeds. You've got multiple deeds, and we just couldn't really find a rhyme or reason to why that made sense to exempt.
So, you mean if I'm going to acquire a five-foot strip from Mrs. Eichner, I have to replat and she has to replat?
That's correct. Previous ordinance did not require that, and that's why we have a lot of issues in our building permit process, because the records we have now don't match the records that you have. And so, checking setbacks becomes difficult, checking easements becomes difficult because the plat no longer matches the deeds.
I thought it was required.
There's no exemption at all. So, for me personally, title doesn't necessarily, from title, right? If you're looking at a title perspective, we have to have a physical description of the land.
Right.
So, we're not going to have, we don't, we never require anyone to replat before they close. And we have quite a few, especially, for example, in the River Hill, when they conveyed that Green Belt space behind, we have a lot of lots plus that additional green, you know, that space. But unless they want to go further and do something else, then we just kind of move forward at this point without.
Yeah, those would be grandfathered, but that is a prime example. If they were able to build on that, there's now a lot line there. Our code says you can't build that lot line, and we measure setbacks of a lot line regardless of ownership. So, it creates future conflicts. So, we're actually removing that exemption.
That's a minor replat, though. So, that really has a whole different standard.
Shorter approval process. Obviously, there's, typically, there's not any engineering involved, it's just surveying and title work and reviewed at the staff level.
Okay, that's good to know.
General provisions of that plating process, again, here's those four stages for your conventional plats. Going through track one, those steps must be followed sequentially and cannot be run concurrently or overlapped. The alternative process allows you to combine the adequate facilities plan and the preliminary plat, which is what we currently do now. We get the utility concept plan and the preliminary plat together. And then if your design team is ready to go, you can do the construction plans and the final plat together as well.
Remind me, Drew, so when you're going this conventional, when you're going this route, this four-step process, every step is a 30-day shot clock?
That is correct.
And so, that's the difference between doing it that way or the alternative way? Whether you're grouping or you're just going step by step?
Right. Like I said, currently, most of our projects come in with an adequate facilities plan and preliminary plat together from the initial application. Construction plans usually come in separate, final plat usually comes in separate today. So, this isn't that much of a departure from what we currently work today. Again, if we have a very large project, we'd like to see the utility plan first, then the preliminary plat, just to break those apart because that is quite a bit of review on our staff. Again, the shot clock from the 2019 legislature is 30 days from application. If we do not have, if the action is not taken, whether P and Z or staff approve or deny, it's automatically approved and can be recorded as a plat at the courthouse. The plat, obviously, there are some inconsistencies that could occur on that. The civil infrastructure plans would be very difficult to work with if our engineers have not approved the public utilities and they get to now install the public utilities. It'd be pretty dangerous.
Was there an issue between installation and construction and final plat? What was that, what was that that we had to work through?
I've got some slides on that one.
Okay, all right.
Excellent, that one gets pretty detailed, so. Go through the application check, completeness check, any pre-established or any established pre-application requirements, documentation of conditional approval if necessary, and the applicant can request a 30-day extension. Interesting part about that is the 30-day extension must be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, once you've submitted your application and starting the review process halfway through, if you decide you want an extension, you still have to go to P and Z, ask for the extension. It doesn't make sense.
And that's a state deal, is that why it's in there?
That is in the state law.
What is practicality of that?
I don't know. What we've been doing the last, I mean, because the 2019 legislative action, we've been following anyway, even though it doesn't meet our ordinance. What staff has worked on is just worked with the developer and they either withdraw the plat because it's not ready, or we approve it with conditions if they're just small follow-up items. So, I feel our staff has worked around that issue. But the 30-day extension to be approved by P and Z, I think, would lead to more awkward conversations than just working together and getting that design refined, so.
And it's basically because of their meeting schedule, right? So, there are other P and Zs that are around the state that meet more often than ours do?
There are. We actually used to meet twice a month.
Right.
But the case volume that we had, we had more attendance issues, more confusion on which cases were going to which council meeting and created a lot of undue overlap on projects. So, since our case volume really isn't that high, we went to one meeting a month. If we need to, we do have that second meeting for plats if we really needed to work plats faster, but so far, it hasn't been an issue. Just a little more detail on those process, the pre-application conference, middle dates. During those, kind of, we've kind of already talked about this, going through the pre-application conference, some of the details that are discussed. We do have the option of going through our DRC, our Design Review Committee. So, a lot of projects that are larger projects, even if it is a plat, will come through as kind of a site plan review, goes through our staff, all of our public and private utilities, kind of get your roundtable discussion, your due diligence process. Most of that's done by email right now, so they get, the applicant then gets a list of comments from each department that can go refine their design prior to even applying for their plat. Looking at the schedule that we talked about, to make sure that you hit that 30-day mark going to P and Z, we're moving to kind of a application window, if you will. So, for the September 2nd Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the deadline for plats was between August 3rd and August 6th. Anything turned in before or after that, we don't accept the application. Of course, we can have our pre-application conference and go through our Design Review Committee and get comments back and forth. But since we can't get a formal review and get it on an agenda within that timeframe, we've had to tighten that window down.
Has anybody expressed concern over that on the development side?
No. We've actually done more kind of Design Review Committee reviews prior to applications because of it. That way, they can keep working on their design and keep their project moving, but it really hasn't been an issue. And most of the projects are working up to a deadline anyway, knowing they have that planning commission date coming. So, it's always kind of worked through that. Really what it affects is we can't accept anything early. So, if the design team finished something, obviously, before, you know, finished in July, they just sit on it and bring it to us that same week, so.
So, are you finding there's really better work being done early?
The due diligence has definitely increased, yeah. Our conditions of approval, once we go through the final process, are becoming smaller and smaller details as we're getting through. So, we're getting, we're getting good work from our design committees, our design teams out there. Again, the alternative process does allow that overlap of some of the first two steps or the second, you know, third and fourth step. It's not actually a waiver of the shot clock, but we know and the applicant know we've got a lot more dialogue that's going to have to happen since we're doubling up on those applications. So, we've had a few this last year come in within 30 days, come in, sit with us, review it, actually give us revisions before we even get to the planning commission meeting. So, we're getting revisions faster as well. So, that when we get to the planning commission meeting, we have a more complete plat. So, so far, they, we're not formally following this alternative provisions, but our, kind of, our committee, our Design Review Committee works that way. And a lot of our design teams out there, the development teams have kind of followed those guidelines anyway.
But the shot clock is still in, still goes, you just do two within one?
Correct.
Within 30 days, okay.
Fast check process.
Yeah. If we do have a project that is returned, you know, denied or returned with a conditional approval, those revisions now have a 15-day review time. So, that shortens that.
Is that also state or is that just a?
State law. So, what we've, what we've done and recommended to the planning commission, anytime we have a condition of approval, planning commission delegates that revision review to staff.
So, it doesn't have to come back?
P and Z is approving it, staff will review it and check the boxes and make sure those conditions have been met. And again, that's worked really well over the last two years, so. Exemptions from the shot clock, any appeal, waiver, post-plat decision or post-recording events are not subject to the shot clock. So, any of those that obviously appeal and waiver have a much different timeframe because it go into different bodies than just planning commission are not required to meet those 30-day timelines. Getting into Article 3, just a quick review of the adequate facilities plan. Again, this is kind of that conceptual layout of the utility plan. It'll be a requirement for any project that comes in phases, any project that has 25 lots or more, or one acre or more for non-residential plats. Preliminary plat, one of the change we are making is from the current adopted code. Current code actually requires the applicant to submit their plat and the deed. Our staff isn't trained in title work necessarily to go verify that that deed is the most current or accurate or so on. We trust our surveyors just turn in proper items, but it puts the title review on staff rather than on the applicant. So, what we've worked with and come into the Code Review Committee and looking at some options that other cities have utilized, a title commitment, title opinion from an attorney or any other proof of ownership is required to be part of the application so that they can show.
Yeah.
For example, I've had some, you know, minor plats, it may be just a, like you said, adjustment of a lot line between two lots, but those original deeds are back from, you know, 1960s. I don't have any proof that that property hasn't sold or changed since then.
Good question on this, just from, obviously, my perspective with title. You know, we only issue title commitments if there is a pending transaction. But sometimes, and a lot of times in cases for financial institutions that don't want perhaps a policy, because a title commitment is a commitment to, in fact, ensure a future policy. We have provided something that is a document that we call an ownership, an encumbrance report, where we just have the most current vesting document and provide that with any liens, or we could even do easements and other exceptions if that was required. But, but just to be clear, would that be something that would be acceptable?
Yes.
I mean, if someone is planning to buy and sell and replat, then they would already be presented with a commitment from a title company, presumably, but.
So, the surveyor's required to do that title work. The issue we had, our current adopted code puts that on staff to review pile of documents,
easement and.
Easements and deeds and ownership.
On the surveyor.
Yeah, just to show whether it's a certification.
They're certifying, that's a title survey?
Right.
Land title survey?
Certification from title attorney that they've done the research and, yes, the person that's applying is the owner or the person that's signing it is the owner, just to verify that properties aren't being plotted, that may have had changes that we're unaware of. But no, I think that the document you explained to me.
That would be acceptable?
I've seen prior cities, I've seen a lot of just certification from the attorney. I certify that such and such is the owner of this property and exhibit, whatever, from the, from the surveyor. I've seen some that say, we looked, this is the most recent one, that's not quite acceptable. We need a little more detail than that. As you know, title work isn't just that last document, it's everything underneath it as well. So, just trying to verify that we're looking at the appropriate documents.
But you have no responsibility is basically what this is, it's taking any responsibility away from you in that regard.
Right, making sure that everything that they've turned in matches is kind of the responsibility on our staff, but not going to the courthouse researching deeds and making sure there hasn't been any other obscure transactions. That's correct. Civil plans, one of the things that we've, that we currently do, but it's not in the code, the approval of the civil infrastructure plans or the construction plans also serves as the capacity reservation for that infrastructure. This one, state law, actually only requires the city to reserve capacity for recorded plotted lots. We've actually moved that earlier into the process, knowing that we've got some areas that the development is contingent upon that capacity. So, offering that capacity reservation earlier for the development community. Capacity reservation is good for one year, based on any active project. Obviously, if the construction takes longer than a year, we work with that. But that way, you don't get a set of plans approved just to hold it and stop another development from occurring. If you're not actively working on that development, that reservation would expire, as do the civil plans. And so, another project could actually come into play. Talking about the timing of. Talking about the timing of public improvements and when the plat is recorded. So the current projects or current code. Projects have to have the infrastructure installed and accepted before the final plat can even go to P and Z for approval. Obviously, they've checked all their boxes to get that far, so I don't know if any plat, final plat that's been denied. But through the process of getting financing or getting all those approvals. You've got projects that are putting in a lot of money into the ground and project and infrastructure and still don't have their final approval. So what we're actually recommending is that the final plat can go to the planning commission prior to construction. With approved plans. So you get your civil infrastructure plans approved, then you can go to P and Z, get your final plat approved. Can still build the infrastructure before the plat is recorded. So we may have a approved final plat that staff holds until construction's complete. Then staff will approve the, or record the final plat. Does that answer all your questions?
That did, that was exactly, that was exactly right, thank you.
So again, just kind of reiterate a little simpler, the final plat approval is contingent upon the construction plan approval, but not installation. The final plat reservation is contingent upon the completion and acceptance.
And we had, we had, we had someone that is doing small lot development, bringing that up as an issue. Because he was having to put in infrastructure and pay for that infrastructure before he could get final approval of his plat. And like Drew said, I mean, it was kind of almost like a foregone conclusion, but you're still spending money before you have that final feel of approval.
And the final plat, again, the director will file the plat after commission has approved it and after construction has been completed. Rather than the applicant, currently the applicant files the plat, so we get all those signatures, staff, utility companies, owners. Then the applicant records it and brings us a copy. By allowing them to get the final plat approved, we will hold the final document until construction's complete and then we will record it. And I guess that's one of the, following up on the title commitment or the title certification. If there have been any changes throughout the process, that sometimes projects will start under contract, they'll close, continue working their plat. And then start working on the final development, which did have an updated title document that shows that the person signing, the person or entity signing the plat is the owner does indeed own the property. Looking at waivers, rather than use the word variance in this document, because that gets so easily confused with zoning variances. We've gone to a minor waiver or a major waiver. A minor waiver is a minor adjustment to the subdivision standards, whether it's a street width, cul-de-sac length. Alley alignments, I mean, getting down to different radiuses and tangents of how the streets are designed. Those are, would be considered minor and are approved either by staff or the planning commission. Anything that goes beyond just an adjustment of the regulations is considered a major waiver. So for example, if you had a subdivision that wanted to use a narrower street section. Obviously still meets fire code and traffic code, but narrow within our standard, that would be approved by the planning commission. If they decided they didn't want to have a paved street and wanted just to have a green belt or a dirt road. That would come to council as a major waiver. Common one that we deal with are the length of cul-de-sacs. Naturally, in hill country, the cul-de-sac is a dead end, most likely because of topography. Can't get up or down the hill and still meet grades. So when we have an area where there's a valley or a hilltop, but is longer than the standard six hundred foot cul-de-sac length. They can extend that up to, I think it's twelve hundred feet in the code. That would still be considered a minor waiver because they're just talking about a longer street. So. And again, the waiver, the major waivers are not subject to the shot clock. And they must be approved prior to the application of the plat. So the council has already given their go-ahead that yes, this waiver is acceptable. Now go through the planning and zoning commission for the approval process with that waiver in hand. So again, I'll highlight a couple of the key policy items that the code review committee took on. And gave their recommendation, planning and zoning, of course, gave their recommendation. All kind of stemming off of comments from the Kerrville twenty fifty plan and some of the discussions we had through updating the zoning code. Just kind of hitting some of those highlights, looking at private streets, a traffic impact analysis or a TIA, stormwater management. So looking at private streets, here's a segment of the thoroughfare plan. One of the things the code review committee looked at was the green are your arterials, the black are your collectors, the, the heavy black lines, obviously everything below that's your local residential street. The question was, are the collector level streets enough connectivity throughout the neighborhoods or throughout town? To allow any one particular neighborhood to have private streets and engaging community. Kind of the short determination that code review committee made was no, that is not necessarily enough connectivity. We're trying to encourage connectivity through town for alternative transportation and vehicular transportation.
In other words, yeah, we were talking about a lot of that thinking through having to do with ga, with gated type communities as well. And should we put a standard in place for, okay, we've already got a major thoroughfare. So if it's right off of a major thoroughfare, can we just say, hey, we still have a through route, so they can do whatever they want if they want to gate it and put up private roads. And that are not, you know, that are not maintained by the city, so.
And so what we, part of that determination was the collector level is not necessarily, in some instances, it may be enough connectivity, but not always. So recommended a set of requirements that must be met for that development. If you can meet those, you're allowed to do private streets. If you cannot meet those, comes to council for a decision at that point. The current ordinance, any private street has to come to city council for approval. So rather than put all of those projects in council's lap, particularly if, especially if they're pretty far along in their design process. Puts a lot of weight on council, makes that decision more of a, as you guys are well aware, of more of a political decision rather than a technical decision. So we've drafted some recommended standards for what a private street subdivision would look like. Again, if they can't be met, they still have the option to come to council and.
Request a waiver.
I mean, it wouldn't be something that staff would recommend at that point, right? For, for the most part.
Yeah, for the most part, we wouldn't, just because we've got a set of standards.
It may just be something that doesn't fit in the box, that still makes sense for some reason.
There's always that opportunity, so. So no private streets will be allowed unless they have a minimum of twenty lots. Streets be restricted to private use, not intended to be a regional or local through traffic circulation. So again, the arterials and the collectors cannot be private. Subdivision is located in an area that is surrounded by at least three sides of either natural or man-made barriers. And subdivision is not located adjacent to an existing subdivision with existing street stubs. Private streets, they'll be required to connect to any existing street stub, or excuse me, not, not private streets. The subdivision shall be required to connect to those existing street stubs. And HOA would be required with any private street subdivision. For the continued maintenance, the covenants and covenant maintenance and assessments. And obviously, the HOA has the authority to collect from the members to make those assessments and those fees.
Yeah, and there's a lot of discussion about that too, and just to be clear, also, there's a lot of times when public and private streets. If, if there are private streets, then they're, they may come back later and say, well, we don't want to be private anymore, you know?
Well, we had one up.
Not too long ago.
The benefit with that one was they built the street.
New standard.
To the standard city specifications. They had done some maintenance on their own, and then they had a third-party engineer provide a report that shows that that street was up to good, good maintenance and did meet our specifications. The other requirement is that a private street is required to meet city specifications for that reason. The traffic impact analysis or TIA. Get this discussion a lot on, really your larger projects. For example, HEB and their project to rebuild that, that location, we did do, or they did a TIA. That analysis showed certain improvements that they were required to make off-site. Obviously, a big trigger to that was they wanted to move the traffic light, so text dot required it anyway. But additionally, that made some changes on Jefferson, one of the intersections on Clay's or on Water Street. They had several other off-site improvements that they made based on that. What we didn't have in any of our codes is when is a TIA required? So we've been handling that on a case-by-case basis through each project. Obviously, most of our arterials are text dot roads, so they often require it before we would anyway. But just wanted to be, set some clear guidelines as to when the TIA is required. So two of the triggers for a TIA would be if on-street parking is requested in a commercial area. So that's your parking, your angled or parallel parking on the street outside of the, or in the public right-of-way. Or if you're requesting to have a traffic light. This is an example of a worksheet that would be presented at the first stage of that plat, whether it's adequate facilities plan or preliminary plat, or if it's a minor plat. This does not require an engineer at this point, this would just be a, a worksheet. The top half of that is really information about the project, ownership, size, location. The bottom half of that worksheet is information that comes out of the book. Institute of Traffic Engineering, is that right? Text op manual, basically you look at what is your use of the land, whether it's office building, apartments, grocery store. And there are standard ratios to the traffic impact, whether, what are the average peak hours, what are the total twenty-four hour peak? And it's just going through that book, filling in this worksheet line by line, just showing the number of traffic generators that you're creating, the increase in traffic by your.
Yeah, and this was, I really, and this was, a lot of this was worked through with staff and with the engineer that was on the committee. And looking at, at these scenarios and, so I think it's a really, I think this is really great for, for the city, for council, for pe, for everyone and for the developer, because based on what you're doing, there are certain triggers when you would have to spend more money with an engineer to get a more in-depth traffic impact analysis. But it all, it all hinges on this, you start with these particular guidelines. And wherever you fall on those, based on text dots. Whatever book they put together, kind of sets up whether or not you have to go more in-depth with your study. Or based on those peak hours and number of trips, if that's enough to move the project forward, correct?
So is, I finally found it here, the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation is the manual. So again, like you said, you'd go through, what is the proposed project? How many trips, vehicle trips does it generate on average? If you're under one hun, the way this worksheet is broken out, if you're under one hundred new trips. Then you're not required any, any additional information, just this worksheet. Once you're over one hundred new trips, then you're required to engage the traffic engineer and do a level one traffic impact analysis report. Over five hundred a level two, over a thousand a level three. And those different levels are again, how large of an area are you looking to, to prove or disprove the impact? So with, again, using the example of HEB, it was an existing store, rebuilding a store in nearly the same location. Outside of moving that traffic light, there wasn't a significant increase in traffic created. But by moving that traffic light, it changed the traffic patterns, and so they were required to do other, other improvements. Had it just been tear the store down and rebuild a store. That's slightly larger, ten thousand, fifteen thousand square feet, would not have generated more than a hundred new trips necessarily. So that would have been minimal impact.
So this is the wor, this is the traffic impact analysis worksheet, this, that was. So the, in addition to the two bullet points that you showed us on the, on your slide right before. It still has the, the third bullet point, right, that says that a TIA is required in accordance with the something?
If you generate more than a hundred.
Okay.
Trips.
Per what? Per day, per hundred trips?
Based on the peak hours.
There's threshold requirements.
Okay. And peak hours being what?
The, the way the worksheet, you start with the land use. Based on that manual shows the average or the typical AM peak hour rate, PM peak hour rate, weekend peak hours. And then, of course, you get the daily total trips, that's all part of that manual. So once you find, if you're opening a restaurant, look up restaurant, it'll give you all these numbers based on the size of the restaurant or the occupancy of the restaurant, it's based on size of the restaurant, excuse me. So if that project as a whole is creating more than one hundred new trips in traffic. Then you'd be required to do that further analysis.
Okay.
Really tries to eliminate any opinions of traffic from either side, either party. And provides some standardization about, okay, you input X and you output Y, and if there's a delta of more than a hundred, then it, it triggers more analysis.
So using Arby's as a.
One hundred percent more traffic.
Yeah, so, so now that we've got this bottleneck that happens every day because of the drive-through line that extends out onto the text dot road, is there gonna be, what, what happens now because of this? Do we just wait for the new to wear off and hope it changes? Is that where we start, or do we try and figure out another drive-through route for Arby's so that they're not congesting that traffic light all day, so?
I'm not sure, I'm obviously not a traffic engineer, so I'm certainly not an expert on that. I don't know that that store would have been large enough to trigger a bigger analysis anyway. I, my experience, I think it is just the newness. Depending upon the community and how exciting the restaurant is, is how long that lasts.
Where we need it is a Whataburger, that's where we need a TIA then.
And for example, when Jack in the Box first opened in Lubbock, that line was about a quarter of a mile every day for about two or three weeks. And then slowly died off from there, or where it was not an issue. Most of the restaurants do have adequate stacking lanes, I think it is just the newness of that project.
We had, we had it raising canes earlier, you know, when they first opened, you know, it's kind of like trying to, you know, plan for permanent, you know, parking and permanent traffic, you know, for a Black Friday sale, right? You, you just don't build it for that, that kind of one percent opportunity, but I think that we do have, the Whataburger example is a great one, right? So that wasn't to where it's operating now, you know, when it first was designed, you know, obviously it, it, it wasn't maybe designed as adequately as it should be. And so this gives us the ability to better analyze that from the get-go. So that at least as a baseline, once it, normalization of operations occurs, it is more adequately handled.
Does this analysis apply to them? Please, we're talking about subdivisions.
Well, they're.
They're, they're different analysis though, right, for?
Same, same analysis.
It's the exact same.
Just different timing of the project.
Okay, and are they still using the same manual too?
They weren't required.
This isn't in place before now.
No, I'm talking about the other analysis. So we're talking about two different analysis here, because this is the subdivision code that we're referring to.
So we're talking about two different analysis here because this is the subdivision code that we're referring to. This anal, the traffic impact analysis that would be talked about for the restaurants wouldn't apply. So I'm curious with the same standards for the, the, the Institute of Traffic Engineers, because they're gonna be referencing those, right?
That, that is the standard for um T I As.
Okay.
Yeah, so it would, basically it would be the same report.
Okay, gotcha.
Just different timing of the project.
Perfect, okay.
And next one is stormwater management. Picking up on the twenty fifty items underwater, obviously, most of them are being underwater. Uh pursue zoning ordinance amendments to support riparian area protection. Enacting zoning ordinance amendments would help the city to enforce stormwater measures identified in stormwater quality plan. And prevent problems that would need to be addressed otherwise. Encourage the establishment of riparian protection zones in the floodplain permitting process. And address water quality considerations. Consider adding water quality review to the floodplain permitting process.
Why does it say consider?
These are the uh action items out of the Curville twenty fifty. Sorry, um take a holistic approach to stormwater drainage management based on the level of growth anticipated in Curville twenty fifty. A comprehensive stormwater master plan should be developed to assist the city with management aspects. A future development pertaining to flood control and stormwater quality. Establish reasonable guidelines or standards to encourage more green infrastructure. And develop drainage design standards, including green design options for onsite retention requirements, water quality standards. The comprehensive stormwater quality plan should be developed outlining impervious cover requirements. And the types of acceptable measures such as the vegetated swales, pervious pavements. And water quality basins and other stormwater management goals. All that being said, subdivision code really isn't where that should be seated, it's just kind of the starting point of the development project. Uh so what the recommendations for this, um any requirements or any projects. On the Guadalupe River or any of the tributaries, just encouraging those um. Best practices for stormwater design and stormwater quality. We wanted to at least acknowledge that we're looking at further into those drainage requirements, but subdivision code is not the best place. For those to be uh those requirements. But since this is the starting of most projects, most development projects, wanted to start kind of acknowledging that there is importance there and we are looking at those. And sidewalks. Um as you guys are well aware, we've had lots of discussions about sidewalks. Couple quotes coming out of the Curville twenty fifty plan and some action items. A strong focus on improving pedestrian connectivity, that also kind of relates to the private street gated community discussion as well. Uh sidewalks should be extended whenever possible to enhance connectivity. A couple other quotes, just talking about sidewalks. A few action items, uh community and neighborhood character and place making. Develop and update and implement a plan that accommodates alternative types of travel, sidewalks, trails, bike paths and bike lanes. Uh to connect gateways, neighborhoods, corridors and river, the river and other destinations. Seek to install sidewalks and bike bridges at major crossings. Develop a plan that encourages and accommodates more sidewalks and ramps and address different lifestyles in different areas of town. Make downtown roads more pedestrian friendly, review and update sidewalk master plan. And update the sidewalk ordinance. Review subdivision proposals for connectivity in relationship to the thoroughfare plan, trail, pedestrian and bicycle plans. Develop and update and implement a plan that accommodates alternative modes of travel, again, looking at sidewalks. Add bike and pedestrian safe routes. Create pedestrian and bike connections from Shriner University River Trail, you see that one has been completed. Uh so kind of the summary of those goals, provide pedestrian-friendly connections throughout the city. Reduce and eliminate gaps in sidewalks, present and future, provide and improve alternate transportation options. Uniformity throughout a subdivision, uh connect to adjacent neighborhoods and improve pedestrian connectivity around schools. So as we talked with the code review committee, one of the things we looked at is the timing of sidewalk development. Current construction timing, sidewalks are required with a building permit. On any commercial construction addition regardless of platted or unplatted. For residential, it's the required with any, of the first structure on any lot. The exemptions in our current code um is largely what's produced some of the gaps and continued to produce new gaps in sidewalk design. Uh or sidewalk construction. All legally plotted lots prior to January one of nineteen eighty-one are exempt from sidewalks. Re-plats of lots originally plotted prior to nineteen eighty-one are not required to sidewalks.
Wait a second, legally plotted lots existing, so if you have a legally plotted lot, maybe we don't even have these in existence, I mean, there's a few, but. Prior to nineteen eighty-one and it hasn't been developed and you come in and request a permit, you still don't have to.
Still not required sidewalks. If that legally plotted lot has been replatted, you're still not required sidewalks. Unplanted property that qualifies for an exemption from plating is not required.
And what was the thought process behind that, is it because that neighborhood character may not have sidewalks built around it or?
I think that there's, I think that was part of it was any new construction just matches the area. But these other exemptions just kind of exacerbated that and continued it even farther. And the last one, I think, captures that better than anything else. The existing subdivision after nineteen eighty-one where seventy-five percent has been developed without sidewalks, you're exempt. That one makes a little bit of sense. The other three just kind of keep continuing this process. Uh so then, again, this is the current code, this is what we've kind of traced some of these gaps back to. Recommendation coming from the code review committee is sidewalks should be included with the road construction during the development of the subdivision. For residential projects. So rather than each individual builder being required to build the sidewalk, the developer, when they put the road in, since the sidewalk is part of the road. Um it's within the right of way, it's public transportation, those sidewalks should be constructed at that point moving forward. Code review committee did have some discussion on when a developer builds the road with sidewalks, the home builder. Now has to come in and cut part of that sidewalk out to make a driveway, but collectively, they all agree that. For the better of Curville, that does make sense. Um the developer also could kind of pre-plan all those driveways and build them as driveway approaches from the beginning. Uh so there is, there are other alternatives than just tearing out the sidewalk. Sidewalks are reconstructed with a start or initial phase of any non-residential project and all sidewalks are required to be built regardless of phasing. I don't know that we see a lot of that here, but um just as we had a large commercial development. Once they start that commercial development, all the sidewalks as a part of that.
For all phases?
Would be required from the beginning for all phases. Yeah, I, I can't think of any commercial projects that we've had those come in at this time, but.
So that means we're, when you have a phased project, you're requiring all roads to go in as well now?
Platted.
Oh.
So it would still be, still be subject to the plating phase, that's correct. Think of a good example.
Okay, that makes, that makes sense.
Yeah, but so, but if you had a, a single platted lot, it still had multiple phases of development. The sidewalks are required for the entire lot, not each smaller phase. Uh reduce the number of sidewalk exemptions, reduce the number of sidewalk waivers. Uh code review committee did have a mixed opinion regarding the requirement for waivers to require a super majority. And this is drafted to only require a simple majority.
What's the difference between a simple and a super?
So for council, that would be four out of five vote instead of three out of five.
Yeah, it was, it was actually talked about for a long time and I think the feeling was. The, what Drew said, that I think that.
Pretty much a split.
Was, but I think the over, the overriding opinion became just simple majority should be sufficient.
Uh I didn't point out, the major waiver does require a super majority vote. Coming back to, not, not sidewalk waiver, major subdivision waiver requires a super majority vote. It was discussed with sidewalks, but finally just kind of left it as a simple, simple majority. And then we, we do acknowledge a sidewalk master plan needs review and that is um, I guess, pending project, if it's a fair way to say it. So as drafted in the code, non-residential and multi-residential developments. Unless they already exist, sidewalks shall be constructed within all street right-of-ways adjacent to all tracks or lots utilized. Or intended to be utilized for any development purposes, whether plotted or unplatted. Uh to the full length of the front edge of the lot or track involved, said construction is to be concurrent with the construction of the first structure. On the land, whether or not the tract has been plotted or not. Concurrent with the construction of any addition to an existing building, regardless of the amount of additional square footage. And concurrent with the construction of additional buildings. Single and two-family residential sidewalks shall be constructed prior to the acceptance of the public utilities, again. This is construction with the road rather than with each, each lot. For existing lots, it would be triggered by the building permit.
Basically, with, with that Drew, where's. Make sure I'm understanding this, if in a neighborhood, a new house goes in, there's no, basically, there's no sidewalks there. That one new house will be required to put sidewalk, a sidewalk in front, even though. It stops at the neighbors.
That's correct.
Okay, and also on that note, if you have an existing piece of property. That say it's zoned commercial, it's on a state highway and you want to. Let's say you want to put in storage units there. You would have to put a sidewalk in front of that. Project, that development, okay, what if that, what if that ha, already has a um concrete drainage?
Some of the circumstances we'll have to look at, uh because there's.
There's some grading issues too, right, that will allow for.
There could be grading issues. And we do have several areas of town that have a concrete drainage channel immediately adjacent to the, to the right or to the street.
Right.
We will have to look at those and have, um, there is a waiver process still.
Okay.
Now, can I ask you a question, now this, you're not, I don't expect you to have the answer because this is, this is a hard question, because I can't think it through, but. Drew, you remember that there was a meeting where we had four sidewalk waivers come through, I believe? One for the Stople property, one in Vicksburg Village, one and, and I can't even reme, well, one along the. There were two sides to the Stople property, one going up the highway and then one around. So I guess my question would be.
And one on Leslie Drive.
Yes, 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 where the little um development was going, yeah.
Six lot subdivision.
Right, right, so I guess my question would be, all four of those waivers that came to council, would they still legitimately be able to come? With that waiver request to council? All of those would still be eligible for that kind of thing.
There's, they could still ask for the waiver.
In any circumstance, someone can come and ask for a waiver.
Yes.
They don't have to, they don't have, it's not like the private streets where they have to meet certain criteria before they can.
Correct. The bulk of the change, and obviously the wording changed, but based on those recommendations, the biggest thing was removing these exemptions.
Yeah, the automatic.
Yeah. We've all heard the sidewalk to nowhere, if I'm the only lot on the block that's building a sidewalk, my sidewalk goes nowhere. Well, the other end of that sidewalk, if we don't ever start, we can't ever get there. So if it is an older subdivision and someone's rebuilding a house or adding onto a house, they'll be required a sidewalk. And as we've seen, that kind of process will slowly continue as uh we continue to. Develop or redevelop or update some of those neighborhoods.
So what's, what's required in building on, I mean, if you, if you actually add an addition to the house or?
Any addition.
Anything.
So if it's just an interior remodel, it would not be required, and if they're doing any addition, it would trigger a sidewalk requirement.
Can you tell me and refresh my memory, what are some reasons why somebody would come and ask for a sidewalk waiver?
Well, on those four.
A lot of what we hear is financial.
Yeah, money.
I've also heard other builders say they didn't want to waste their time coming to council, it wasn't worth. The cost of the sidewalk wasn't big enough for them to take the time to come to council, they'd rather just build it. Using Ken Stople as an example, there were some topography and drainage issues. It would have taken substantially more construction to get the sidewalk in. It's not impossible, it just would have been a lot more uh construction for the drainage piece to still work. I've seen a couple based on existing topography where the lot was elevated immediately from the back of curb. Anything else you can think of?
It all comes down to cost, all those can, all, all those can be overcome, I mean, all those, you can build bridges over drainage, it's just you can do things to make it work. It's all about the cost, how much that cost is, and the interesting fact is if, if you let someone off for not having to build that sidewalk. Then it falls on city to, to do it if there ever needs to be a sidewalk going across, they're the one that comes and minds loop five thirty-four and run at the cycle show.
Yeah.
We decided we, uh we didn't make that developer do it, now there's not a sidewalk there, if there's ever gonna be a sidewalk there, it is gonna be very expensive. And it's gonna be ours to do.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of a concern, it's, I mean, we look at twenty fifty plan and the community really sees a need for sidewalks. Especially for safety reasons and I remember during my orientation, we took a drive there and we looked at some. Locations that we didn't require a sidewalk or at the time didn't have to do a sidewalk and, and now they don't and. I mean, if there's gonna be a waiver provision, if we're looking at the minor waivers, the major waivers. The minor waivers.
Sidewalk, sidewalk waiver is still separate from those.
Right, right, no, I understand, I'm, I'm referencing this though, because minor waivers are for something very minor. You know, just a minor correction that may not be something, and that requires a simple majority vote. A major waiver that would require something even more substantial, requires a super majority. And a sidewalk having a waiver for that seems very substantial. And I don't know, I've asked council if we want to consider doing a super majority for that. You know, I know the committee was kind of split on what to do there, so seems something pretty.
Did P and Z have any comments on that?
They didn't, um they just kind of took the, uh they agreed with the changes and removing those exemptions, but as far as the vote, they left it as is.
Well, and do you have a defined? Waiver policy really that says, so there, there's no room for like selective enforcement, you know?
Yeah, that's good.
I mean, that's my concern is.
Go ahead.
Well.
It's similar to what we talk about with the C U Ps for short-term rentals.
Yes.
Having some type of policy, so we're not, this can go through, this can't.
Just a, y- yes, you can ask for a waiver if blah, 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 yeah, it's gotta meet certain.
We have a lot of other.
Criteria to even come and ask for a waiver.
Right, I mean, we have a lot of other, you know, s- sections in here that say if you meet these requirements, you can come and do this. These are the requirements for this kind of waiver, it makes sense for something like that for a sidewalk.
We can look into that, I mean, we don't have a set list of, kind of a checklist of what you can request.
Yeah, so I mean, can somebody come, uh could I come up and say, look, you know, I want to build storage units? You're making me put in a sidewalk, I can't afford a sidewalk, is that a good enough waiver?
I can request.
It's valid, it's a valid waiver.
I think that the question becomes, can we define all scenarios, that's always the difficult part.
Right.
So we typically have to leave that or any other reason that you can think of. Generally speaking, staff has not been supportive of most of the waivers. Case by case, based on the existing conditions.
And I, I do kind of worry about the case by case business, you know, and, and the, the room for selective enforcement and. The kind of position it puts us in where somebody says, well, look, you did it for Joe Blow over here, how come you won't do it for me? It's just a.
I think, and I'm. Councilman Garcia, I think that's where you're going, I think the super majority may be the easiest way to get there.
I agree.
Just because rather than try to define.
Yeah, it's gonna be difficult to do that.
Define what we're gonna pr- recommend or not recommend or what.
And once you put it in writing or you, you know, then you're, you're stuck with it and the next time it may not work, so.
And then that way it will also require those people who want to file that application to give a really good compelling reason to council. And first to really contain and say, yeah, you know what? If it's, they, they have a real compelling reason, we have that super majority vote that says, okay, but other than that, yeah, no, I agree with that.
Stuff on email about that, what are you, what are your, what are your opinions? Stuff on email about that, what are you, what are your, what are your opinions?
I think based on the community's input through the comprehensive plan, the Curville twenty fifty plan. Knowing that if we provide a waiver, city's gonna be the one on the hook to, to build it anyway, or.
You, you, you like, it sounds like you're saying that that gives you some comfort if it's a super majority.
It does.
Gives you a little backup.
I, I think it does too, I mean, we could, and it protects council, because everybody's gonna know at least one person off council, I mean, that is wiser. Yeah. So you're able to say to that individual, hey, you know, bring it to all of us, let's look at it. But it really takes a, a strong consideration, as that gets out in the development community. They're gonna say, hey, council just isn't doing this just because it's a hardship or it's a little bit of expense on us. Uh when um when, when the city built the, out front of this, the wastewater treatment plant. There's no sidewalks on either side of it, and we built the whole, the whole sidewalk across our plant, because that's what our rule was. And so we, we, we follow our rules and we, we want other people to follow it too.
Yeah.
Sometimes it is difficult, and maybe sometimes that takes a little bit of a development um agreement with them, but. Um setting that standard for the developers to know, if you come here, it's not gonna be a low threshold, that we really want these sidewalks to build. It's probably, in my opinion.
So EA, Mike, one, whichever, if, if, if you're hearing from us right now, a general. Consensus maybe, and I don't know if we are, but if you're hearing from us that we may want to look at a super majority, would you bring that back to us in first reading? Or would you wait until first reading for us to formally request that to be amended?
I think we could bring, I mean, I, I, I'm hearing, you know, pretty strong consensus here amongst the four that there's a desire to look at. A super majority, so we can put that language in there and certainly if y'all have further discussion, we can amend it at that time.
Have a problem with, with that, putting, just making that upfront?
We'll have two readings on that, so.
Right, okay, so we can start with that rather than the simple majority.
Absolutely, and I, I did want to, right, and, and Stuart, correct me if I'm wrong, but there, there are some criteria built within the sidewalk ordinance. Uh that is different, remember, we're talking today about subdivision, right? But in within the sidewalk, there are some very specific criteria, both on the administrative front. Um that are, allow for administrative waivers, for instance, if we didn't have enough right of way uh for the road width that's needed. And so a sidewalk is basically precluded maybe because of some natural feature, so there are some criteria already within that.
And that came up with one of our waivers. Because when the, it was actually presented, then it was presented in such a way that it sounded like the. Request was more of an administrative request than it was a for a council waiver.
Exactly, but I think as we, as we come back before you guys um with revisions, proposed revisions to the sidewalk ordinance. Which we want to get through this process first, because this really is, for the most part, this is greenfield land, right? And so a lot of the examples we're talking about are, they've already been subdivided and it's just a matter of, you know, buildings, what's being actually built on those properties. And so again, the subdivision process, and so I, I think we can get into some of maybe more of that criteria when we get into the sidewalk ordinance later this year.
But I, I think the super majority, we hear you loud and clear with that, that, from a process standpoint, we can make that change, that's no problem.
Thank you, Drew, any other, any questions?
Lots of stuff.
It's in fact, questions?
Uh yes, when you were referencing the different sections there, are those the ones, the sections in the current draft? Or are those gonna be the ones that will go into the code?
Current formatting is what is going into, so.
Okay, okay, okay.
So you have, you have the reformatted draft.
That was at, sorry, that was after it went to P and Z on the fifteenth or July, something like that.
Yeah, um I won't go back, because it's too many slides.
No, sure.
Um the original draft, the code review committee and P and Z referenced um divisions instead of articles. So this has been reformatted to fit our current.
How everything else is formatted.
Exactly.
Perfect, okay.
That won't, that will not change.
Okay.
And it makes things easier all the way around, both for staff and for the public. Okay, so getting back, I'm, I'm stuck on sidewalks. Okay, now, we know that Trinity Baptist Church has got a great big, brand new sidewalk. In front of their church, there are not sidewalks on either side that go down Galbraith Avenue. Now, let's say me, as a homeowner on Galbraith, let's say I want to add a man's room or something to the house. Anything that requires a permit, does that trigger me having to put in sidewalks at that point in front of my house?
Yes.
Okay.
But also, Brenda, with particular to your neighborhood. I don't know, as part of the administrative waiver process with the grading on the John Galbraith and the right of way with, there might be some.
A variance, a waiver?
I mean, I don't know that, I don't know the, I don't know the details, but I know that, that if there's a certain grade. Or if there's a certain amount of right of way and there's only certain amount, then y'all, y'all are the experts, but is that right?
Yeah, well.
Mr. Hoppy, no, those are in the subdivision ordinance, separate from the, or excuse me, those are in the sidewalk ordinance.
Okay.
Not the subdivision ordinance.
Okay.
Well, there was an, a fairly new home in our subdivision, and I always wondered why they didn't have to put a sidewalk. They did, they did not have one, but it's the topography in front of it that, that said it was. Uh prevented it from.
Yeah.
Which is a, a somewhat unique hill country challenge, right? I mean, it's one of the things that we face that's different than flatland country, so. Uh but we'll, we'll be looking forward to coming back with you guys and having more discussion when we get to updating the sidewalk ordinance.
Yeah.
Absolutely, because clearly there's some cleanup that is due, but fortunately, I think as far as the subdivision ordinance, we've done a good job of cleaning up. And we heard community loud and clear through Curville twenty fifty that their, their, this community wants to be much stronger on sidewalks.
Yeah, and I, I just want to say that, I just want to thank the staff um throughout this whole code review process. And it's my understanding that the committee itself um has pretty much wrapped up its duties. Well, starting with the zoning and then the signs and then um what, what came after signs, was it this one?
Subdivision.
Subdivision, yeah, um and it was interesting because at that time, we went through COVID as well. We were looking at ways to, I, I don't know, maybe reduce some of the expenses and, and, and. There was also from the committee, a real feeling of wanting to have ownership of it. Uh when we first started doing the code reviews, it was largely directed by an outside firm. They did an excellent job and city worked very hard with them, so it wasn't that y'all weren't working. But the committee, I heard from committee members, and I was a member of the committee, that, that they felt a lacking sometimes of ownership. And a need to push and propel it forward at a faster pace for the consultants. Um so especially in the case of this particular code rewrite, I know, I, I would guess. That, that Drew and staff, y'all worked through this one probably even more diligently. And you did a lot more of that own personal research, reaching out to other communities for things like the TIA that was developed. Um and also to the committee, I was so impressed with, you know, just having engineers. Um having small um, small developers and having. Um um we had, let's see, architects on the committee, we had just homeowners on the committee. It was such a good input from the community, I, I'm really proud of this really, really cumbersome. Uh but, but it was a very, but it was a very, I thought it was a very great effort on behalf, on behalf of the committee. And especially on behalf of the staff, and I'm really, I'm really pleased and thankful for that effort, so.
And I would say thank you also, because this is, this is a lot of work.
Eighteen months worth.
Really good discussions too, along the way.
Yes, um so next steps. Um again, looking at September fourteenth for the first reading, um make the change on the sidewalks, sidewalk waivers. That's it.
Will we have a final copy at that meeting or will you give it to us after all the readings are done and approved or?
Uh we'll have a final copy uh to you for that.
Final draft.
Will this draft be put on the website? It will be, okay.
Yeah, we could put this presentation as well as the draft out there if y'all like this too.
You say you're still working through some definitions?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't, you don't have the final draft ready for us, plus what we asked for today with the. But what we've received so far is, is similar to, very similar to what, what the final draft will look like.
That's correct.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Hey, manager, anything else we need to go over?
That's all we have for you this morning.
All right, Mr. Hayes, you wanna legally advise us on anything before?
I don't.
All right. Then we are adjourned.